I'd like to call this meeting of Finance and Claims Committee on this 30th day of September 2014. Members present, Mr. Whittington, Mr. Thornberry, Mr. Sankar, and Mr. Mumper, along with Mr. Stith, our auditor. So we have a few things to discuss as far as the 2014 appropriations, as far as some changes that would need to be done for our next meeting. And we also have a couple of things to discuss as far as some equipment, as far as police vehicles, trucks, and fire apparatus, so we can at least start looking at that type of information that was presented to us and go from there. So, Mr. Stith, would you like to lead us off with some of the suggested changes that we have been discussing?
Yes, I have an Exhibit A spreadsheet that just has the major items on it that should be addressed. Starting at the top, the clerk of courts contractual, the magistrate were short by about $2,900 in the fourth quarter contractual fee for him, so that covers him through the rest of the year. Under that, you see earnings tax. There are three members of the earnings tax office who locate out of a contractual key. They do not have enough in that key to cover the entire fourth quarter, and it's just over $20,000 for those three contractual employees. While they do get paid more essentially per hour if they're doing it this way, the city does have substantial savings in pension and healthcare costs on them, so while it seems like it's a lot, it's still a pretty good deal. So that's listed on there. As we look through the payroll for their office at the end of the year, close out the third quarter, we may be able to approach this later this month, early next month, and back some money out of their payroll key. They look like they're going to be short of projections in their expenses there, so that may offset some of that expense. Retirees' healthcare and C-9 trust, these are two areas that are very expensive to the general fund. We have been caught up with retirees' healthcare. We are making regular payments to the C-9 trust. However, we must continue to encumber the funds to the C-9 trust as they come in every month, even though we are behind on the payments. We have been making payments to it for the past, I think this was the fourth month, of $30,000 a month, and we are scheduled to continue at least that level of payment through the end of the year or so, gradually getting caught up there.
So what you have listed there is the...
It may not cover the final end of the year. I think that'll get us through November and then see how much there is left. Representing actual expenses in retirees' healthcare, representing money that needs to be encumbered for bills that come in this year in the C-9 trust.
And briefly, I mean, that was a big issue last year, so we're saying the C-9 trust people are starting to receive payments again?
Yeah, as of the first payment was June.
Okay.
We've been making regular monthly payments. Now, that does not mean we are paid up through June.
Right.
Right now, there's about, I want to say about $280,000 owed to the C-9 trust. We just made another $30,000 payment, so you could probably take, it's probably about $250,000.
Okay.
The biggest thing is we, well, and I'll address that again in a moment. Outside legal fees, we have attorneys on retainer that do things such as civil service issues or outside issues that are not managed by our law office. This year, the expenses have been a little higher due to a couple of issues, and adding an extra $10,000 should cover that for the rest of the year. That's still less than what we used to spend. I think this will bring them up to maybe $27,000 if we look for the year. When I started doing this, we were over $100,000 a year in that key, so I think last year they did very well on keeping their costs down, and because they were so low last year, we appropriated less money. The street fund, they have the revenue to support that. We need to put some money into materials and supplies. I put $50,000 there. We have done some then and nows. I think they're up to about $10,000 or $12,000. This will really allow them to buy some more materials to fix the streets, so it may not cover everything that they have on here, but it'll get them going pretty well, and we can see after closeout of the third quarter, maybe even being able to increase that a little bit.
I think on that list of requisitions or whatever that came down, I think some of those, we'd be able to scratch off. Not all of them we can cover this year. I mean, as far as them, even having time to utilize some of the equipment that they were, you know, like I think the Motrims on there.
Correct.
Those things are, you know, that's a thing of the past.
The, some of those things, basically what we're doing is we're just having the Safety Service Director resubmit POs.
Yeah.
Because there are a number that have been, that were rejected and set back, and just letting him make the decision as to where to utilize this money now.
So the then and now worked pretty well, as far as...
Yes. You know, then and now allows us to take individual purchase orders up to $2,500, knowing there's revenue, knowing that we're going to change appropriations, and being able to put that purchase order through before the long legal process of a month that it takes to change appropriations. So as long as it's those smaller POs, we were able to do that, so we were able to get some things rolling last week. Building department refunds, obviously, that were paid for, for whatever reason, they get refunded. Capital projects, Fund One, that's Fund 46, that is the Crown Avenue project where we've got money coming in. That just reflects revenue, and it's a pass-through account from Ohio Public Works Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Fund 50, this is for tires for one of their big trucks. We're moving it from their contractual to their materials and supplies. Of the changes to the general fund, this roughly $130,000, that money's going to have to come from somewhere, at least for now. We've talked before about moving it out of some payroll keys to cover it. After closeout of the third quarter, which should occur in about the next 10 days, we can get a better idea if we can raise the certificate, but I would hold off on doing that and like to stay within our existing appropriations now. We could split that between the two major keys of police and fire, and then as we increase appropriations at the end of the year, or if we get to increase the certificate, we're going to have to put more funding into those two keys. Big thing about, most important thing about the payroll keys at this point is we have now made it past the point of the two, three payroll months.
Yep.
So the payroll for the last three months of the year tends to be a little more predictable than it was at the beginning of the year, so we can get a lot closer numbers. And after we close that third quarter out, we're going to run that number for all of the keys and see where we stand on payroll projections for the end of the year. We were talking a little bit about retirees' healthcare, C-9 trust. This month, one other major subject, police and fire pension. As of yesterday, we are paid up-to-date, so we have dug our way out of that hole. We are going to continue making payments to them on a monthly basis. You know, it was in the past that we would pay every quarter, and you always pay at least three months in arrears, and since you're paying quarterly three months in arrears, that means you're averaging at least five months that you're paying back. When they changed the law, that became very difficult, and you had to do a lot of catch-up. They did take three months' worth of pay and, worth of bills, and split them up over three years, but it still meant you were two to three months behind, and we were probably three months on top of that behind. But they've worked with us, and we work with them, and we're caught up, and now that we're caught up there, we can take that extra revenue every month that we've been applying to those bills and apply it to other things. We did get caught up on the retirees' healthcare earlier this year. We're now caught up on the police and fire pension fund, and the last thing that we are behind on, that we're getting caught up on, last major thing, is going to be the C-9 trust. And that is going to take time, but just like those other areas, as our revenue holds, we will be able to make payments and get caught up.
There's no more anticipated changes from the police and fire pension plan to make those payments any more difficult on us? Is there?
I don't think they could.
Yeah.
You know, the way the plan is now, it costs us about $140,000 to $150,000 a month. There's a twice-a-year payment of $76,000, which we just paid, and then there is, at the end of 2013, 14, and 15, an extra $150,000 payment in December of each one of those years. So a $300,000 payment in December for every year. Like I said, at least we're caught up to where we're supposed to be right now. Anything else? We, the biggest thing is going to be making sure that $130,000 for Crown Avenue goes in, because that money has come in and has to go out. We are looking at other funds right now, especially once we close out the third quarter. We are looking at all of the funds outside of the general fund that have revenue that has exceeded the predictions and the initial appropriations. So when you see this in two weeks on your desk, you may notice there's extra lines, and those would represent at that time any fund that has revenue to support an appropriation change. So there may be some additional fine tuning there, but we want to look at these funds that have revenue that have come in and make sure that we're appropriating the money appropriately.
Because that revenue is, would be strictly designated to those specific funds and could only be used and allocated from those specific funds?
That's correct.
Without the risk of anticipating or raising expectations, what types of funds do these typically represent?
Well, if we look at things like funds that have specific grants in them, such as the Health Department Grant Fund, we make estimates at the beginning of the year, they're going to bring in about $90,000 worth of grants, but if they've brought in more than that, we're going to raise it. The federally forfeited property, which is the drug fund that is going to pay for vehicles, that money comes in very inconsistently. We don't know month to month how much is going to be brought in, so we need to watch that and as revenue comes in, increase the appropriations. Some funds that we know we get a fairly consistent revenue flow, such as the street fund, and state highway fund, and the permissive tax, those have a fairly predictable revenue for the year. So we will actually appropriate in those funds our projected revenue for the year. But other funds that have grants that come in and maybe are not consistent year-to-year with their revenue streams, we appropriate those funds as the money comes in. Because what you don't want to do is appropriate it and at the end of the year realize you spent more than came in. Okay.
Jim, on the Crown Avenue, $130,000, is that a matching fund? I thought that was a grant.
It is. We, but we need to show it on our books.
Oh, okay.
So the state actually makes those payments. As the money comes in, some of these funds are, some of these revenue streams from Ohio Public Works Commission come in as revenue to the city, and we have to put it in a fund, and we can write checks for it. But most of these are actually money that's managed by the OPWC and payments that are made to vendors, and we don't even get the checks or see the money, but we have to report it on our books. So that $130,000 may not be an actual check that comes into us, but we need to show that that money was given in as a grant and paid out.
Okay. Yeah.
Jim, do you have any projections for our year-end? What's that going to look like compared to the last couple?
We're going to be doing much better than we have the past couple, and if our revenues in the general fund, and just discussing the general fund, if our revenues hold to the same increase that we'd seen in the first three quarters, in the fourth quarter of the year, we'll actually be not breaking even, but getting pretty close. To give you an idea, last year, we ended up $1.3 million in the negative on an accrual basis at the end of the year, mostly made up from money that was owed to police and fire pension, to retirees' healthcare, to the C-9 trust, and to some vendors. This year, where we stand now, without looking at increased revenue for the rest of the year, we would be at $488,000 in the negative. So a third of where we were last year.
Good.
If our revenue keeps coming up, we may see that drop to the 250 range, and that becomes something very doable, meaning that if we're looking at how many months we are behind, we would literally be a week behind on payments to things. The big concern for us is going to be the bond next year and some of the things to look at for that. Now, you know, we have $286,000 that's owed to U.S. Bank on April 1st as a regular bond payment. That bond payment will continue on a regular basis of $286,000 every April 1st through 2022, I believe. I have to actually double-check that. We owe $1.77 million on that same day to outside bondholders for the city. Looking at the projections for the first quarter of next year, the ideal situation, the way I see it, is I'd like to try to write a new bond for $1 million. Pay off the $286,000, pay off the $777,000, and get a bond that's a one-year note for $500,000, and a bond that's a two-year note for $500,000. Because I think that if we look, we'll still have to tighten our belts, but we need to stop kicking the can down the road. And I think a million-dollar payment in April, if we stay as conservative as we've been, is doable, tight but doable, and it'll take a significant amount of debt off of the table. Then in 2016, we'd be talking about a $786,000 note and another $786,000 note in 2017, and then it would drop in 2018 to $286,000 and hold at that level up through 2022.
Does that pay that $1.7 million note?
Correct.
That personal note, is that due in April?
Yes, April 1st.
All right.
So we're starting some discussions, the mayor's had some discussions with some banks, we've started some discussions with banks. It's been difficult to enter into much discussion because our audit had not been released by the state until yesterday.
Yeah.
And it's just been the past couple of days, and this has been a long process, not, while the state may contradict, they really had nothing to do with the city. We were not going to do a CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, for 2012. In doing that and admitting that to the state auditor, they said, "Well, since there's no rush, we're going to do other people's firsts that have to have this done by this June 1st deadline." So they didn't even start on the 2012 audit until September of 2013, and it drug on and on and on. Because we didn't have a time deadline, there was, there was no pressure on them to get this done, and the audit team was slow, which they blame us for, even though it's not us. But it, it became a long and unpleasant process, but it's finally done. Frankly, it was done six months ago, but they just, it's been sitting and being reviewed in Columbus, and we have not seen somebody from them since March in this building. But it's finally over, and the good news is that we're going to do our pre-audit for 2013 in probably December, the way it looks, and it's a whole new team.
Mm-hmm.
So they brought in a new team with a positive attitude, and we've talked to them about working together and doing what we can to get this done faster, and so I think this next audit cycle will go much smoother.
So in general terms, I know a couple of years ago when we were in this, looking ahead, and if I remember correctly, there were statements about how it was just considered almost impossible to get any kind of bond work out of the banks. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's why we ended up with the $1.77 through private individuals and so on. Is that, is that environment changed, so to speak?
We now have a couple of banks that want to talk to us about it. What that means, is it going to be fruitful talking to them? I'm not sure. But they wouldn't even talk to us before. So we've got some banks approaching us from the standpoint of, "We would be interested in looking at you as a client, bringing all your accounts to us, and as part of that package, looking what we can do with your bonds." And I think that if we're approaching them with the standpoint of, "We don't want all of the debt, we're going to pay a big chunk of it off, we just want two notes," that that might be more acceptable to them. That being said, we also still have the people we've done business with before and the outside note holders. I've had conversations with them in the past two weeks here, and, you know, their interest is they wanted to know if we were going to try to pay it off before April 1st. You know, they want to know when the money's coming and didn't want to be surprised by that, and I told them that our intention was to take it to that time or within a month of that time. And, you know, they expressed an interest that if we were looking at redoing part of the note, the million dollars, that that's something they would consider talking to us about. So that is our fallback.
Cool.
Although our preference would be to go with somebody less expensive.
More, yeah.
Of course, that, the cost of that note is also why we want to take as much off of the table as we can.
That's a good start anyway, as far as getting to leave some positive feedback from a couple of different places and not us kind of scratching to find somebody that's even willing to talk with us on that, so it's come a long way.
Yes.
It's good. Well, we're still talking this stuff here, I just, I put on the, you know, 2015 discussion, and that was part of the discussion, that I wanted to have, you know, as far as, like a little preliminary plan or ideas for, for that, because I think that's going to be the biggest part of figuring next year's appropriation, will be how we do on that bond refinancing. So that, I think that's what we need to keep focusing on, some of the other everyday, you know, payrolls and different departmental things. I think we have a handle on it that we can move forward on some of those in the next month or so to kind of get some projections, but the biggest thing for '15 really is that the bond refinancing. So hopefully that we can get that behind us and get, you know, something put together early, where we can maybe have something by mid-December for next year versus waiting until the very last week of the year, trying to figure something out.
If we were going to go with the private investor route again, they had basically said they would need a no in January.
Sure.
So, you know, waiting till the end is probably not even an option there.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay, so we'll start working on that. Well, you have been, and then the mayor has been, but I mean, as far as appropriations and that, probably towards the end of October, start really putting a few numbers together and seeing what, what we can come up with for next year. So, all right, that was on that. Then the other thing we had been discussing, and Chief Kramer had submitted us a few proposals in regards to the three cruisers, and so I had that on here to look at, and I, everybody had the information from the last meeting, and I think if we, we get the recommendation to report out from here that we move forward with the proposal for the three cruisers, and then have an ordinance prepared so we can have it ready to go in that second week in October, that way potentially they will be here by the end of the year, and then the first payment wouldn't be due until 90 days into 2015.
Now, for the discussion that the chief had with us, he said that we wouldn't see any payments on this. He would carry the first two payments, which would push him through 2015, and we wouldn't see any payments till 2016.
Mm-hmm.
Is that...
That's what I heard.
That's what...
Well, he said the second one is questionable right now, but he thinks he'll be able to do that.
So revenue holds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, this is a fund that has an unpredictable revenue stream, so he's saying if the revenue's there, he'll make the second payment. He knows he's got enough to do the first. If the revenue's there, he can do the second, or at least as much of that as possible. If it's gone the way it's gone the past two years, there'll be money, but it's, it is an unpredictable fund.
And remind us again what fund that is, for folks listening in the field here.
It is out of the, basically, the seized property fund that when, you know, under law, as you know, if you seize property in a drug bust, the government gets all the money, and then a portion of it will come back to the local community that was involved in the bust. And so if you're involved in a countywide sting and there's a lot of money involved, you get a piece of that coming back from the government, and it can only be used to do policing expenses. You could buy approved vests, you could buy cruisers. You can't buy, you know, the auditor a new computer, but you could, you can buy things related to policing.
Right.
Okay.
So crime pays, is what we're saying.
Pays the taxpayer sometimes.
So if everybody is in agreement with that arrangement and that plan, and I'll report out that we recommend that it be approved and that the, I can have, see about having the mall department prepare an ordinance for the lease purchase of those three, and that way if they, they'll have two weeks in order to be able, if they have any more detail they might need from the police chief and/or the leasing arrangement, they can, they'll have time to get it prepared, so.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
One thing, I think the chief has been very patient about this, and I admire the way he went about in doing this.
I agree with that.
It's, I know he put a lot of work into this and a lot of thought into this, and this is the type of thing that the city needs, not only now, but moving into the future with modern municipal economics, is thinking outside the box of just having the general fund pay for everything. You know, if you need something, how can you pay for it without just saying you need it? And there are some departments that have really come a long way and done a lot, and the chief has put a lot of work into this, so.
It's good to hear.
It's an excellent job.
Okay, two other things. Okay, two other things to mull around and consider. We had the information from Chief Goodman in regards to the potential lease purchase of a pumper, and then also he had listed on here an aerial truck as well. The, as far as just a brief explanation on the different payment structure that were listed here, if, the only thing that we don't have on here, the first one was, you know, with just a pumper, he had a, you know, a lease payment over five years. However, I don't know whether that is the only, you know, 60 months is the only terms that would be available on something like that. And then he also had listed a same five-year payment as far as on an aerial truck. Then he had a five-year payment on, if they bought both of them together, and a 10-year payment if they bought both of them together, and then a 15-year payment, which would be available if they, if they were, both were purchased at the same time. So, those are some numbers to kick around, whether, you know, whether we're able to do that in the next year, not even next year, but the next five years or 15 years depend upon, you know, if the proposals go through. Then on the bottom, just explanation, it said about the potential resale of the units, you know, it could be anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 on the old equipment that's over there now. But then the fellow, as you can see, was saying about they're going to figure a 3.5% increase on these costs per year, you know, based on the, what they've seen in equipment purchases. So, I gave everybody, not just finance committee, a copy of this, all the council members to review, and if they have questions, we, you know, get after it to start looking at it to see which direction we would go on that, whether one or the other, both or none. So, that was one of the things that we've been mulling around. The other thing we did receive, some options we discussed about looking into some essential equipment for public works, especially some dump trucks for down there. And these are some rough numbers, and I'll have to get some more detail on these things here, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, on the one on the left for like the F-450 trucks, I believe those would have been like for the small, the dump trucks for salt, the salt trucks. And I think they, he was hoping to look at two of those, but we'll see. And then the other one with the regular cab, that was like a truck that they use in water and that for digs, more so than for salt moving. So, that was the other one there. So, we'll get some more detail, but he had that for me when we got here tonight, so I wanted to get that into everybody's hands. And the only thing we don't have on this would be if there's, what type of lease option payments would be available on, for something like this, and to see, down the road, we'll need to get that type of information to see how it can work into planning for, you know, 2015, '16, and so forth. The other thing would be, I don't know, Jim, I don't know if we have banks that we work with here that would consider lease purchase on some of these things or not, if that's, you know, who we would contact on something like that, see if they'd be interested in a lease purchase arrangement on the trucks and that. See what type of deal we get, but I don't know who we would contact, or if you have some recommendations we could, you know, shout out to.
Well, as I said, we're going to be talking to these banks in the next few weeks about the, actually within this next month, about the bond situation and about, you know, our other accounts. This could be brought up as part of that, get a few estimates.
Okay. Thanks.
Have we, speaking of salt trucks, have we secured enough salt for the winter? Do you know that that's been taken care of? Have you seen purchase orders on that? I've been hearing horror stories from other municipalities that salt is going out of sight.
There was no bids came in.
Nobody even submitted any bids.
No. So, do we have stock of salt?
We, I know we have some down there. I don't know how much I haven't really been down, but we had, I think, a decent amount down there, if I remember, but I, it's not enough to do what we have like last year.
What I've heard through the grapevine is the major salt suppliers in this entire region, as part of the country, are low, given last year's winter, and the salt may just not even be there for smaller municipalities to purchase, which is why we may not be getting bids. It's not that they don't like Norwood or want to do business with Norwood, it's just that it may not be there.
I know the county had paid $46 a ton last year, and the lowest bid they got for this year was $106 a ton. So, the supply is down, so the price goes way up.
Given the storage capability that we have, I know that we've bought more when we can, so that we do have a little bit of a surplus in there, a little bit of a carryover. I have no idea how much is there or how much we even use, but.
Yeah, I'm just seeing, trying to see what we have and then how much we typically would need or use.
The forecast is for a cold winter, not necessarily a messy winter. Somebody pointed that out to me, and I hope that is the case. Cold is much better than messy.
All right, and then, so hopefully, if that first meeting in October, maybe we can have another finance meeting, because I want to get this stuff into the other members of council who aren't here, and so we can kind of get a feel for, you know, whether we can move forward on these other two items or not, and that way.
On the two public works items?
Well, I think all, all three, the public works and the pumper, I think that's somewhere.
I think the pumper may have to wait till after the bond gets done.
But, I mean, it's in the committee, so I think we'll see where we can go with this in October. And that way, we can, if need be, get something prepared for the last meeting in October. Though I do know we have the public hearing scheduled for the block grant funding and that, so that will be something that we have to get taken care of, because that needs to be submitted by the 1st of November, I believe. So, and that's a good amount of money. Well, if we're awarded, you know, we put together a, you know, our plan and then submit it and then see what they come back with, that, yeah, we'll give you this this year or give you nothing this year, so.
Is that probably carrying the next council meeting?
Correct.
There's two of them, right?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So, we'll probably see some information on that coming up.
I would hope, yeah, I would think, we have to inquire about it, but I know when we discuss at council, we think that we need the first one to discuss, get input on what we would like to request for and how much. And then the second one is, I think, a public hearing to determine what we're actually going to submit, you know, and so, that's pretty important. But it does need to be in by the 1st of November, I believe, so.
So, in general, related that, if someone comes to me and says, "Oh, you're divvying up the community block grant, I'd like to put in a proposal or something," who do they talk to?
Well, I guess they could submit it to anybody, but then they can come to council and submit it also at the public hearing as well.
The first one would be input for.
I'm not positive exactly what cannot be submitted, you know, what items would not qualify for community block grant money. But in the past, we've, we've done some funding with the Health Department.
Streets.
Streets, parks.
Parks.
Things of that nature.
Dental.
The dental program.
Oh, yeah.
So, the senior, senior bus a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So, but those were, those are some of the things, but I'm not sure exactly what wouldn't qualify for, you know, community block grant.
Ken, I'm just wondering, who's the ultimate resource for information about that in the city? Would that be the administration or?
I would think they would have some, because that's usually where it's generated from. I know Donna was pretty involved with it as well.
Well, yeah, with her time in the Health Department. Okay.
All right, so what I'll do is report out about the Exhibit A appropriation changes and that potentially there may be a few more dependent upon if the revenue is there in specific special funds to raise those special funds. So, there may be a couple more changes in those additions, and then report out, recommend the, we move forward, have an ordinance prepared for the lease purchase of the three cruisers for the Police Department.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good.
All right, well, I would say that this meeting is officially closed, and thank you.
Thank you.